I'd like to call the commission meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to coming out tonight. Thank you all for coming out. Roll call, please.
James Holling.
Here.
Ben Meeks.
I'm on the phone.
Alan Casper.
Present.
Ward Roland.
Here.
Tim Cassell.
Brian Shields.
Here.
Coleman Mayhew.
Here.
Kermit King.
Here.
Steve Stallman.
Here.
John Brown.
Here.
Bert Sellers.
Here.
I've joined you from a remote location.
Okay. Like, uh, before we get started, I'd like to welcome Mr. Coleman Mayhew to the commission.
Thank you, sir, for serving.
Now, if you would, recognize a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, if you would, join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under our, indivisible, and eternal.
Okay, uh, for the record, tonight, we have two, uh, members remoting in, with Mr. Vic Ingram and Commissioner Ben Meeks. Mr. Meeks is under the weather, and I think Mr. Ingram is on vacation. Okay? Uh, everybody take a minute to look at the agenda, see if we need to add anything to the agenda. Okay. Any additions or revisions to the agenda? Okay? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Sellers and second by Mr. Casper. Do you want to do a roll call vote, or just?
James Holling.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yeah.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallman.
Yes.
John Brown.
Yes.
Bert Sellers.
Yes.
Vic Ingram.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, I got you. Little break there. Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, has everybody had a chance to look over the, the minutes from the March meeting? They should be in your packet there. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion been moved and second.
James Holling.
Approved.
Ben Meeks.
Yeah.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallman.
Yes.
John Brown.
Yes.
Bert Sellers.
Yes.
Vic Ingram.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that we move to any presentations tonight. Okay? Let the record show there's no presentations. Hearing of the citizens. None. Let the record show there's none signed up to speak tonight. All right, moving on to the reports. The Fire Rescue Association reports, Mr. Mike Neal tonight is standing in for Chief Fowler, and also Chief Neal's presentation is kind of two parts tonight, so just for the record, so he's going, he's got two things he's got to discuss. Chief Neal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Neal. Uh, okay, this is the first thing we want to look at in the Fire Rescue Association meeting, which we have on Thursday and Wednesday. Is that better? You said I had a big mouth, I thought you could hear me, I'm sorry. Ward said he heard me good. Okay, again, uh, from the Fire and Rescue Association meeting that we had, the third Wednesday night of each month, uh, we had several things that we went over. Uh, the first thing we wanted to put out is that we have appointed a committee, okay? A committee has been appointed and formed to try to get a better system of our fire ground operations with multiple units on scene, okay? And basically, the way it's sort of set up right now, uh, structured fires, we usually get four departments dispatched in this county, so, you know, I'm just saying, for example, at Fifty-Eight West, you got Thirty-Six, Thirty-Eight, Thirty, maybe Twenty-Five. You get a lot of radio traffic on these channels, and, and right now, we basically dispatch on Channel One, uh, you sign on Channel Three, letting them know you're in route, you get on scene, you tell them your truck's on scene, everybody say goes to Tac Four, that's the Tac channel they give you, and you have multiple units. Other day, we had a house fire, uh, in Keeling area, and had seven fire departments dispatched to that location. So it's gonna be a lot of people on the radio, okay? So what we're trying to do is get a little better system on which channel the person needs to be on, and for example, like water supply, you know, it was talked about maybe putting that back on the initial department's channel, you know, uh, the biggest thing we're trying to prevent and protect, for example, with the Tac channel you own on fire grounds operations, and that's actually fighting the fire. The first unit's in, you may have three or four firemen inside, in our packs, and, you know, they could run into a mayday situation, wall go down, ceiling go down, and you're trying to talk on scene and get them out, and you got somebody coming from four departments away telling you, hey, where you want me to put my fire truck, or what, I need to go get a load of water, whatever, so we're trying to better clarify, better operation in going forward, on how we can protect ourself and keep our, you know, traffic to a minimum and move to different channels, so that's one thing we're looking at right now, I mean, going forward, and this is to make our process better and safety for our people, okay? Okay, the second thing that we went over, and, uh, he mentioned a, a twofold thing, the, the committee, the, excuse me, the association meeting before last appointed a committee, and this was looked to get a better financial accountability of the county money that's funded to each fire department each year. And, and we want to make sure we accountable for the money spent, and this and that and the other, so Zach Perkins of, uh, Gretna Fire was head of this committee, and if you would, Zach, if you'll come up and put your presentation on, what you come up with, okay?
Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone, again. Uh, my name is Zach Perkins, I'm the president at, uh, Gretna Fire and Rescue, um, presenting the accountability for the volunteer funding. Like Chief Neal said, last month, uh, we talked about it, and we put together a committee with Chief Fowler from Blair's, Chief Morakis from Callens, uh, Mr. Slamp, Mr. Key, myself, um, to determine the best way to go about, uh, getting this accountability back to you guys, or to the county, to show where the funding is going. In your packets tonight, they passed out earlier, it's the, uh, expenditure detail report, uh, that's kind of what we come up with, it's, uh, broken down into several sections, uh, for example, training for, uh, fire and rescue personnel, emergency medical care and equipment, uh, PPE for fire service personnel, uh, apparatus, fire service equipment, public safety, education programs, and building maintenance. Um, so what, uh, our recommendation from the, uh, Fire Rescue Association is to put this in with the service agreement, uh, for, for the year, and, uh, the report would be due back to the county at, on July fifteenth, after the end of the fiscal year. So, for example, this would go in for fiscal year twenty-three, and it wouldn't be due until July fifteenth of twenty-twenty-three, with the stipulation that it's not, if it's not turned in, then the, uh, first payment that comes in August would not be made to the departments until they get this report turned in. That's about it of the presentation. If you, if you guys get a chance to look over it, um, you guys have any questions or anything for us?
So from the committee, it came straight to us, or has it been?
Uh, yeah, we, we approved it in the Fire Rescue Association to bring to the commission for approval, so yeah.
You said this would be added in with the service agreement?
Yes, that's right.
So Zach, how did all the departments feel about it when y'all presented?
We really didn't get much, uh, I guess backlash or anything for it, um, everyone agreed that something needed to be done, uh, to show better accountability for the county funds, so, uh, and everyone agreed that this was, uh, everyone present agreed that this was, uh, the best route that we come up with to do it.
Chief Neal. Oh, I'm just having a hard time hearing that. Sorry, I'm out tonight, but for clarification, did the association vote on this and approve it?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Ingram, the, uh, association did vote and approve this to move forward to the commission for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for, for Mr. Perkins?
Mr. King, just, just to add, just one, one or two little quick things. Most of us put in for ATL money, that's your fire program's money, that the state gives the county and it processes. Also, they give us full-for-life money, that's your rescue in of the state, they give the money to the county, but it goes through the county's hands to us. Now, in accountability for that, for example, I get X amount of dollars for full-for-life through the state, but I have to fill out a form, I want to think this is Robin, Chris Limp, is it Robin? We take it to, and I gotta show her, I'm, I'm just gonna use five thousand dollars as a figure, and the paper that Zach's got, they use that sort of format, I gotta show her, well, I bought five thousand dollar worth of equipment, and I paid for five thousand dollar of equipment, and that's sort of a same scenario, we're gonna keep basically the same form they have, and the same way for the ATL, for the fire, you know, if I buy a turner gift, I buy hose, whatever, we gotta show where we spent that money, and it can show you an invoice or a check if needed so, in order to get the money, so that's the accountability part of it.
And also with the same format in the form, it should be a little bit easier for them to fill out, is that correct?
Yeah, that, that was kind of our thoughts, too, 'cause it's a form that everyone's kind of already used to with the ATL money that comes through as pass-through money from the state. Uh, one thing I forgot to mention was, uh, also the, uh, the paper call for EMS, that's not part of, uh, the accountability, 'cause that's already accounted for as, 'cause the county is who counts the calls to, to give out the money, and the, uh, expenses for fuel and electricity, all of that comes off the top, so that won't have to be accounted for in this form also.
So all of that's basically, the, the fuel and the electricity's already the rec bill, so they already have that, that money already accounted for.
Exactly.
Okay. Any more questions for Chief Neal or Mr. Perkins? Thank you, sir.
Okay, Zach, thank you. Uh, Mr. King, the only other thing I, I got is, uh, I think everybody here knows Chris, Chris Limp's, uh, last, last meeting, far as the, uh, public safety, he's been with her a few years, and, uh, has done a good job, and, and worked together, worked on this budget a lot with, uh, Mr. Monday and the board of supervisors, so Chris, we appreciate, appreciate all you've done, and, and, uh, helping us out over, over the last few years. Also, I'd like to thank this commission, we've got a good bunch of people on this commission, you look around, a lot of experience, uh, business-wise and fire and rescue-wise, and also, we'd like to thank your board of supervisors with our continued support for fire and rescue in this county. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Okay. I'll need a motion to add this to the service agreement, to forward it to the board of supervisors for approval.
I'll make a motion to add it to the service agreement.
Second. Okay. Mr. Ingram, Mr. Meeks, did y'all hear the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Meeks.
Yeah.
Casper.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Cassell. Shields.
Yes.
Mayhew.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Stallman.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Sellers.
Yes.
Ingram.
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, the county staff report, Mr. Slim.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it, uh, good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick items, just to update you. We had another round of, uh, ARPA applications that went before the board of supervisors last week, those have all now been approved, uh, we have all but four agencies that have put in, and, um, I'm sorry, we have all but three, I have one on my desk that, uh, I got after, uh, the board meeting, and I have, uh, a meeting with one agency this week to help them with an application, and that'll pretty much just leave us with only two outstanding to give us applications, and then, once we have those, we'll get the committee together and finish to review that and get that to the board as well. So far, we've had, um, you name it, we've had some really good projects, a lot of folks have, uh, used the money to upgrade their stations, buy new SCBA's, go back and pay for medical supplies and equipment, uh, turnout gear, and a lot of them have also used it on debt service for, uh, fire trucks, amelances, and so forth, so, we've had some really good projects, and I think some folks have gotten to, um, hopefully get a few steps ahead with this money, I, I hope that's what, that was what was intended to do, so. Uh, just a little update, uh, I'm, I'm really proud direction we've been heading, and our training, uh, we've got, uh, several classes going on in training, uh, if you don't get the newsletter, uh, let me know, you should be getting it, but if you don't, let me know, we, they changed up the way we do our newsletter, um, about a month ago, and I, and I think there's some folks who are not getting it, so if you're not, let us know, but, uh, you know, we've, we've had a, we've almost through, uh, one, a firefighter one class, it's been full, and, uh, we've got a couple of EMT classes going on around the county, and we're getting ready to have some of the little ancillary classes, like basic pumps, real water supply, things like that, so, uh, tickled to death that the way we're going, we're actually even gonna have, uh, the school board reached out to us and offered up an electric school bus training class, they have purchased two electrical school buses, and they're probably gonna purchase more, so, uh, they've offered some training, we're working on getting that set up as well now, so, and, uh, lastly, as Brother Mike said, uh, this will be my last meeting as a director for turning things over to a more than capable Chris Key, which I'm very, very happy he is here, uh, to, uh, take the realm, and he's gonna be the interim public safety director, but, uh, uh, I've been here a little over four and a half years, and, uh, after I finished my executive fire officer certification program and completed my master's, I had a desire to wanna go over and eventually do county administration kind of work, and, uh, but that came quicker than I thought it was going to, so, uh, I'm excited about that, but I'm also sad, uh, a little bit, because, you know, uh, I've been in fire service for thirty-seven plus years now, and, and twenty-two of that have been dealing with career departments and, and, and volunteers, and, uh, uh, I've come to know a lot of y'all here, and a lot of y'all become my family, uh, you know, the fire service is one big family, and, uh, uh, so, uh, y'all have been really, really good to me, and treating me really, really well, and I couldn't ask for better people to get to, to be around, and I'm lucky, I've got a great staff in all aspects of public safety, and, uh, I, I do ask that you remember, uh, be patient with Chris, I, I tell him it's a, you know, Chris is perfect on fire and EMS, but we're getting ready to throw him to the wolves with some new stuff, uh, you know, I, I tell him animal control and nine-one-one's a whole nother ballgame, and so, uh, uh, I'll be back and forth for a couple of months, helping him out and helping him do a few things, we've got, uh, several projects I've been, uh, responsible for that I'll finish out, so you will see me back a little bit here and there, but I appreciate what all y'all are doing here, it's a big job, uh, it's not always gonna be easy, but, uh, you know, we're making right, the right strides, and I can tell you from, uh, the last four and a half years, I've seen a lot of great improvement in our fire and rescue service, and our volunteers are a whole lot behind that and pushing that, and that's great, so, I appreciate all y'all, what you've done, so, and, uh, I've, like I said, I've made some really great friends, and when Mike calls, I'm still gonna answer, I know he's gonna want me to buy a ticket for something, so, but I appreciate all y'all have done, thank you so much.
Well, uh, Mr. Slim, we really thank you for your, for your service, and, and, uh, thank you for all you've done for us, and, and we continue to work with you, I hope, and Chief Key, we're looking forward to working with you again. Okay? All right. Anything else, Mr. Slim? Any unfinished business? Okay, with that being done, moving on into new business. All right, the first thing on a new business was the adoption of the twenty-twenty-two Fire Rescue Commission bylaws. Mr. Slim.
Thank you, sir, um, these, just so you know, a little back- Thank you, sir. These, just so you know, a little background, a lot of our bylaws for the Commission do mirror a lot of the bylaws for the Board of Supervisors as much as possible, so we can be consistent. A lot of our county boards and commissions do that, just for consistency purposes. There's, there's one thing that I'll point out, one change that we needed to take out from the last set of bylaws. If you were on the Commission before, we didn't, we didn't have a tie-breaking vote. Now, we have a tie-breaking vote. So, under Section 4.1, we needed to remove anything regarding the tie-breaking, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, under Section 6.8 is what we needed to remove. I removed a sentence regarding the tie-breaking vote, because it is addressed under Section 4.1 of how we will deal with tie-breakers. And then, also, there's one more change, and I believe we can add this in and be in order tonight, to be consistent with county code. Mr. Ingram reminded me, in the county code, they did add a blurb in the county code that no member of the Commission may be a county employee. So, under 4.1 of these bylaws, Section 4.1, we just, in the last sentence, we need to add, no member may be a county employee, to be consistent with our county code. Other than that, everything is, as we've discussed.
Which number was that? The last one you're about to, huh? What was it, the section?
4.1, last sentence under that paragraph, and that's where it talks about members and terms, just no member may be a county employee.
Now, would they, do they need to change these before we adopt them?
I think we can still adopt them, I believe we're in order to do so. We can table it if you want, just for the cause of that, but I think you'd be okay to do that.
General, what's your pleasure?
They'll have to be amended. If we approve them tonight, they'll have to be amended. I'd say we table it until the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
I think that would be the best idea, is, you know, that way we don't have to go back and change them again, you know, after this meeting, but...
If you're good with table, that's fine, that's, we, procedurally, we can still operate under the old ones, as far as that goes, we're fine to do that, which is what we're doing.
Okay, General, I entertain a motion, table the bylaws until the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table them until after we get these corrections made.
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Meeks, Mr. Ingram, did you hear the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, ready to vote?
Meeks.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Mayhew.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Stalling.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Ingram.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. From the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Vic Ingram?
Yes, sir, I want to echo our gratitude for all that Chris Limp has done, and I'm sure that that's just the beginning of the thank yous that he will receive in the future, but also very grateful for Clarence Monday and Kim Vanderheide, for their ability to work on our budget, which allowed us to make a lot of approvals, and also for the many that contributed to the work on the ARPA funds, which I'm very, again, very grateful for the applications and the ability that we had to approve all of those. And so, I just want to thank everybody for what they're doing for serving us, and it's just an honor. And I wish I could be there with you, but can't do it tonight, but thank y'all so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ingram. The FY23 budget and requested of use of contingency funds, Mr. Meeks?
Yes, sir. So, this is kind of a two-point discussion, and again, okay, with Mr. Ingram said, I wish I could be there, but you know, out of work under the weather, so we'll get back next month. But, as far as the budget and the contingency funds, being two parts here, the budget discussion we want to have tonight, there is a $90,000 in the budget, it's currently in there now, there's not 90 left in it, but it's currently in the budget for fiscal year '22, and it also will be, we'll have to discuss that line item for next year's budget as well. But, essentially, I was talking to Director Slim today, and that $90,000, $40,000 of it goes to a line of duty death additional policy that aside from what we already have through the FIF. And then, some of the money, I'm not sure exactly how much, goes to a volunteer retirement incentive program, which I think the Association has voted to do away with, and so that'll come later. But, it's roughly $24,000 left in that fund that is just gonna end up going back to the general budget if we don't reappropriate it. And I believe with the fuel costs that we have, everybody knows diesel fuel, $5.19 a gallon right now, I know my department alone is $4,500 over budget already, and we've got, that was up till March, so I've got three months more to go, and I, every fire chief I've talked to is in the same date. So, talking to Chris, and he can chime in whenever he's ready, and give you guys some feedback as well. But, talking to Chris, we could do $750 to each agency as a supplement to their last budget, no, their last block funding money that they get, and that would be per service. So, if you have a department doing, you know, fire, they would get $750, if they were doing EMS, they would get $750, and of course, if they're doing boats, then they would get a max of $1,500. So, I guess that's the first point of this line that we'll need to decide, is that something we just wanna do to appropriate this money to the volunteers? That, you know, in my book, has been doing a great job, keeping the calls covered, calls increasing all the time, and with inflation, prices, fire trucks went up a 8% again in February, everything's increasing. So, that would be the first part, I guess, Mike shared, that we would have to decide if we wanna discuss and vote on, and then I'll go into the contingency time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Meeks. Mr. Slim, you got anything to add?
Yeah, let me, so, for the last year, sir, there, a couple of years, there's been money in the budget that we, that we pay the line of duty out of, but there's also some money in there, agencies wanting to participate in retirement, and we don't get many of them wanting to do that. So, with that money in that budget line right now, I cannot allocate it to the agencies. What would have to happen is the Commission would need to make a request to the Board of Supervisors to allow me to move $24,000 from that line to allocate to the fire and rescue agencies, specifically for fuel. I've looked at most of their fuel lines, and most of them are way over, because the cost of fuel skyrocketed. So, you know, was trying to do something to try to help them with that, and there is some money there, but it would, you know, I cannot do that myself, I have to have authority from the board to do that. So, you know, I sat down, did some math, and we could give everybody $750, if you do two services like Gretna, they'd get $1,500. So, just something to try to help them with fuel a little bit, and I, you know, I think it's a fair request to take back to the board, but I need that coming from the Commission.
Would you necessarily earmark it for fuel, just, you know, just say, hey, we're gonna give you money left over? I mean, I guess all, what I'm getting at, all cost is up.
Oh, it is.
I mean, for supplies, everything that you buy, would you necessarily just earmark and say fuel, once you say fuel, that's what it's gotta be used for?
I would earmark, well, I'd put it towards fuel first, to tell you. I mean, that's where I see a lot of negatives.
Yeah, I mean, probably a lot of people is, you know, but I would just, would you wanna kind of...
Well, and at the end of the, at the end of the budget year, we balance out all those lines and zero them all out, and what's left, the agency gets. So, theoretically, we could put it in anywhere, you know, it could, it could move to cover whatever expenses. But, but again, I cannot move it into those without board approval.
I mean, but what gets me is the agency, it may be one agency out there that follows under budget, you know, and they got this $750, they gotta use it for fuel, and they under budget on their fuel. I don't know of any, but I'm just using that as a hypothetical.
Right, and again, at the end of the year, we would, we would move those, I mean, fuel would be what I would recommend that goes for first, but we might have some that are over on electricity, or over on heating fuel, we could have that too, but most of them, the majority are over on fuel right now, I do know that.
Any more discussion? Any questions for Mr. Meeks or Mr. Slim?
I think maybe we need to be specific about your question, Cameron, as far as what we're doing with that extra $750. Either it needs to go to fuel, or needs to be used at their discretion. I don't think, I think we're leaving it a little open-ended here right now.
That's fine.
And I don't care which way, I'm actually okay either way, but I'm saying that I've listened to both y'all, and I'm, I'm not satisfied that we've got a clarification on it.
Well, again, we could ask the board just to, I mean, everybody's expenses is up in general. So, I mean, your motion could be to take back just because of increased expenses, and, I mean, we referenced fuel, electricity, heating oil, and all that stuff. And we asked for it because of that, and then, and then it could go to any...
Some of the departments that have low call volume.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
They might not be using, they might not be as upside-down on fuel as, say, some of the larger departments, and that, but they may need it for expenses somewhere else.
Well, I think, again, if you craft your motion like that, to use it at their discretion.
Why can't we just say, you know, the Commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors release the $24,000 for extra money for the departments to use at their discretion, but if they, I don't know whether I'd even put fuel in it or not.
For operating cost.
Yeah.
Increased operating cost, I mean, what, I don't care, something of that nature, but I need something to be able to take back to defend, you know, why we wanna do that, which I can do, but I'd like for y'all to give me that in the form of motion, if that makes sense.
I make a motion that the $24,000 be moved to the operating cost in the present budget, if that's the correct language. I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been moved and seconded, ready to vote?
Hawley.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Mayhew.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Stalling.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Ingram.
Yes.
All right, thank you. The FY23 service agreement updates and edits, Mr. Slim?
I think, I think there was more to Ben's, I think Ben had a little more before I got to mine.
Okay. What's going on the agenda?
You ready for me?
Yes, sir, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Meeks.
All right, I apologize. I'm trying to watch and listen, and so, but, yeah, so thank you guys for that motion, I think the agencies will appreciate that, and I would kindly request to the Director for next month's, next month's agenda, that we add back on there, a discussion for what we wanna do with the fiscal year '23, and I think the Association has already voted to do away with the volunteer retirement incentives, and I think we just need to discuss as far as our insurance and how we wanna budget that $90,000 going forward, but that can be done next month. As far as the rest of the agenda item here, contingency money, everybody knows that with the budget that they put, just recently passed and put out, there was roughly $982,309 contingency fund. Of course, a large portion of that's going to reassessment, voted, things like that, but they did earmark $77,500 of that contingency money for EMS supplement, which would be increasing paper calls for transport from $15 to $25 per call. We talked about this in length in past Commission meetings, we talked about this, I know the Association has as well, you know, we're, we're $15 a transport, and that's considerably low if we look at what we pay outside agencies, or what we, or what other counties around us pay their transport agency per call. So, that would, that $77,500, if we decided to make a motion to send to the Board of Supervisors to release that contingency money for budget year '23, and this would be in the next year's budget, I think that would be completely acceptable, considering, you know, cost of ambulance is now $300,000, and again, fuel is $5.19 a gallon as of today, EMS costs are ever up, and as the Director can tell you, our calls continue to increase. And also, the other earmarked contingency money in there that they have is a volunteer contribution of $121,000. And with that, equates to Chris, Chris went and asked for a $3,000 increase in the budget for the voluntary agencies, and that's per service, so it'd be $3,000 for fire, $3,000 for EMS, so if you do boats, you do $6,000. That was, if budget time was not approved, but it was moved into this contingency item, line item. And so, I feel like it would be appropriate from the Commission to discuss and possibly push, push forward a motion to allocate the $121,000 to increase all of the department's overall block funding by $3,000 per service, and the $15 to $25 paper calls, we could include in that motion, as well to include the $77,500 to get up to par, or at least closer to par with what we need to be paying for our transport. So, that, in a nutshell, was I'm trying to convey, and Chris, if you wanna add to it, I would appreciate it.
Okay, let me back up, and we'll, because there's two or three things here going on, so I can clarify everything. Number one, and it's in your packet, we have a funding matrix. So, every agencies get base amounts of money based on the service, whether it's fire or EMS. So, there's also benchmarks in each of those that, when they reach certain call volumes, they get additional money in the benchmarks. So, at minimum, forget that I've asked for any increases for anybody. At minimum, we had agencies that had increases in call volume, so they met those next benchmarks. Well, in order to fund that appropriately, out of that contingency money, I need a minimum of $24,000 to fund that line item. So, that's the, that's the first thing, before anybody gets any increase. I would think that shouldn't be a, a problem, but we still needed to come back for a request from the Commission to take back to the board. But, the board had, you know, approved that matrix, and they were happy we had a matrix, so I would think that would, you know, I don't wanna talk out of turn, but I would think that wouldn't be such an issue there. So, that would be the first thing, is we need a minimum of $24,000 to fund the line appropriately before anybody gets an increase. Now, of the increases that Ben mentioned, I'd requested to do $3,000 base increase per each service. So, if, you know, if you're a Ringgold Fire and Rescue where you do... So if, uh, you know, if you're a Ringo Fire and Rescue, where you do both fire and EMS transports, you would get a six thousand dollar increase, versus if I'm a, a Keeling, and I just do fire, I get a three thou- three thousand dollar increase. In order to fund that appropriately, I would, we would need ninety-seven thousand dollars out of the contingency line to be able to give those increases, okay? That's the second step of this. The third step was, uh, the prior commission had asked to see if we could get, take our ca- pay per call from fifteen dollars to fifty dollars, which I had requested. There is not enough money to go to fifty dollars per call. There is enough money in that contingency fund to get it up to twenty-five dollars per call. And in order to do that, uh, that would be an additional seventy-seven thousand five hundred we would need to request the board to take from contingency and to put in the pay per call line. So I hope I'm clarifying that to, so you know what we're asking for.
And I would just like to add, um, thank you for those clarifications, Chris, um, and I'd just like to add, like Phil said, we have a funding matrix, uh, that's already been approved in a service agreement, uh, that each agency has to sign in the here-to, um, we just added some additional accountability to it tonight. And so, you know, this money would, you know, would be going towards good purposes for the taxpayers in this county, because it would be going towards these agencies, and they have to perform based off of the uh, service agreement we already have in place. So, um, you know, I think it's definitely appropriate, but I'm gonna let, let you guys discuss it, and do what you wish with it.
Uh, Mr. Slim, what was the total on that that you needed again, for, for everything to happen?
Um, well, okay, for the.
I know it's three different parts, but yeah.
So it's twenty-four thousand to fund because of those who had increased call volumes, at minimum, that, that needs to be done. Um, and then, if we want to increase those base amounts to three thousand, to agen- well, per service, per agency, that's a ninety-seven thousand. And then if we wanna go from fifteen dollars to twenty-five dollars per the EMS transport, that's seventy-seven five.
So that money is, is there in a contingency?
Yes, sir, there is a contingency fund, yes, sir.
How the way it is now, Chris, the, uh, when a, when you answer a fire call, um, it counts towards your, uh, the matrix, but you, you don't get, you do, you get extra money when you answer a rescue call, is that right?
Yes, sir, there is, yes, we give them some money for supplies.
So you're giving, you're giving, uh, three thousand dollars to the fire department, and three thousand dollars to the rescue department. The rescue departments get funded back, they get money back when they answer calls from insurance companies, and from hard billing and soft billing, so they're getting more money. A company like, uh, a fire department like Keeling and Law Grove has no chance to recoup any of that money. Do we need to look at giving them, funding them a little more, just being the fire agencies? Because they don't have, they don't have the opportunity to get the extra money that the rescue departments get.
Yes, sir, I agree with you, yes.
I mean, I think we need, we, we overlooked that in the last budget that I helped work on, when we presented it to the county. I think now we have an opportunity to correct that if we are going to. Because all these departments, uh, they need, I think they need money for the fire departments, and just like Ringo needs money for their fire department. But Ringo has an opportunity, Blairs has an opportunity to get money from their rescue operation above the three thousand dollars you're giving them. The smaller departments don't have that opportunity.
Oh, I, I totally agree with you.
Yeah, just, yeah, I think, I guess, Mr. Sellers, Mr. Sellers saying that these standalone fire departments don't have any way to recoup their money, but
They don't.
They don't have any way to make any extra money. You know, like I said, their, their fire rescue agencies do have, like I said, billing and, and, uh, you know, like I said, some of the supply money comes back for paper call, but I guess the standalone fires, they just have to work with what they get.
I know that was overlooked in the first budget we created.
Maybe there's some way we could look at it, but, you know, but they don't have any way of, of recouping any of their losses back, when they, their budget is what they, their budget is what it is.
Director Slim? Um, question for you, how many fire departments, and I'm not talking about standalone, I'm talking about in total? Um, cause I think what we're looking at here is, we have to remember, um, I think what you guys are saying is exactly right. There is no way to recoup funds on the fireside, but that's the same for Grutma as it is Climax, or Callens, or Ringo. Nobody can recoup funding really on the fireside at all, so, um, you know, my thing is, how many departments are we looking at? Uh, is it total that does firefighting operations in this county? Um, and then maybe we can get an idea if you took that contingency money, um, and broke that up based off the fire departments.
It's twenty-one departments that provide some kind of fire service.
I think what he's asking is how many does fire service versus both?
Oh, versus both?
Yes, I think, Ben, I think, is that what you're asking?
No, he, I, I was asking a total, um, and I thought it was twenty-one, but I want to verify. Um, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we definitely need to make sure we're helping out the standalone agencies as well, uh, but we also must not forget that anybody that's doing fire service, they have no way to recoup those funds. So, you know, I feel like if we appropriated this contingency money, and say that we're gonna leave out the rescue side, that would be left out, um, you know, altogether, uh, but it would still be appropriate to, to allocate the money towards all of the departments that do firefighting operations. Um, just for instance, uh, running some quick math here, if we done the volunteer contribution, which is a hundred and twenty-one thousand, Chris, to the twenty-one agencies, you divide that by twenty-one, that's fifty-seven hundred and sixty-one dollars, and ninety cents per agency. That's just my thoughts, because the, the fire department, whether they're standalone, or the combination with, like I said, the Grutmas, Ringos, Blairs, uh, Cascades, all those departments, they still have no way to recoup their funding on the fireside, and it all costs money, uh, to run it. So that's just my thinking, and again, I'll be quiet and let y'all talk some more.
Yeah, I get, like I said, no, I guess none of the fire departments, like you said, has a way of recouping back, but some, you know, if it, I guess, Mr. Sellers, you were saying that some of them, you know, they do have rescue and other means of making money. But I guess you, if you do one, you gotta do them all.
I'm not sure what the answer is, but it is a, it is a question that we need to address.
Yeah, it is, but I don't know how you would differentiate between one fire rep department over another fire department versus this fire department does this fire, and this one does fire and EMS, you know, so I'm just.
I think one way to do it would be to give more money to the ones that don't have EMS, give more money to their fire department, and have some kind of formula. Um, not sure what that would be.
And one thing I'll add, yes, um, you know, maybe we need to table this portion of it, and let the association give some feedback as well, uh, cause it, it affects those guys directly. Uh, let them make a recommendation, and, cause we still have time before the new budget, which starts in July one. So we could bring this up next month, if you guys think that would be more appropriate, and, uh, try to get some additional feedback, maybe the director can work on some different formulas for us, and we can look at some different things, and I said, at least get a recommendation from the association on how they feel before we make a decision, and ultimately, you know, to be up to the board to even use that money in the contingency fund, but I feel like if they earmark it, they think it's important enough to kind of set it aside and say it's there, it's in the contingency money, that we gonna have to send a, uh, a motion to them eventually, or a recommendation. But now, as far as the EMS supplement, the fifteen dollars to twenty-five dollars per call, which is seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars, I feel like we could appropriate that tonight in a motion, um, because we've talked about that in length before, you know, we're, we're really low with fifteen dollars a call, um, but that's just my, again, my thoughts.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, it looks like we need to, we need to table how we're gonna distribute the money to the fire departments tonight, until we get some more feedback from the, from the fire association.
I would make a motion that we table it.
Motion's on the floor. Okay, motion's been made, and second, that we table how we're gonna do, distribute the money to the, to the fire departments as far as the increases is concerned, is that correct, Mr. Bur- Mr. Sellers?
That's what I think.
Okay, all right, ready to vote?
Holly?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yeah.
Casper?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stalling?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
All right, now, the second part of that is the contingency money, as far as the, the paper call and, uh, the call volume increase. And the, so the increase for each agency is what was included, is that correct?
For the paper call?
No, I mean, the, the increase for, they had ninety-seven thousand for the increase of each agency, that's gonna be in the, that's, that's what we tabled tonight.
Correct, yes, yes, yes.
So we're on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just remember, at minimum, and, 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 we can table that too, as part of that. But that matrix, if we keep that matrix, regardless, we still have agencies that are due money for cause of increased call volume, and with that twenty-four thousand, we, we, y'all need to request that.
Yeah.
From the board, okay? I'm a man of principle, and I just, you know, we've got a matrix, we need to fund it the way it ought to be funded.
Well, to me, the, the, the twenty-four thousand for the call volume increases and the, the paper call money, we need to make a motion on that tonight.
Okay, that, that'd be great, so I can take that back.
That's what I'm trying to get at, so we can keep.
I'd at least like to leave Chris knowing I got that line balanced as it is right now.
But, uh, that's what I wanted to get, so we was clear on, on, on the motions, and make sure that, you know, we get the call volume increase and the, the paper call increase in a motion as a request to the board.
Do you wanna do them individually or separately? The line, the twenty-four and the, uh, seventy-seven?
I would do them together, just, you know, just do the numbers, and, you know, make the motion with both included.
I'll make a motion that we, um, accept the twenty-four thousand dollar, uh, increase, uh, to continue the matrix as it was written, and to increase the call from fifteen to twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Ready to vote?
Holly?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yeah.
Roland?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stalling?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sellers?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Meeks, anything else on that, on that new business line?
I believe that is all, sir, thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, Mr. Slim, the twenty-three service agreement, your turn.
Sir, so, um, we've talked with the association, we reviewed the upcoming, uh, for next year's fire and rescue service agreement. Uh, did remove, there was a line in here about the audits, I removed that out, um, and that the board had taken that out back in January. Uh, we added in here, so, you know, we recommended volunteer agencies be an active participant in the county's fire and rescue association, we added that, um, and then we discussed how we would give uh, a little better definition of how you get credit for calls, that's in there. And then, uh, the financial form that you guys accepted earlier tonight, that's also in there about when they file that as well, I put that in there, and the rest of that stayed, there was no other changes. And we did, maybe with the association, they did, uh, sign off on approval.
Okay, so the fire rescue did approve this?
Yeah, yeah.
Chief Neal? Okay.
I have one question here, it's just above where the agencies submit their financials. We have in here a line item that says that they will be reimbursed when they, uh, arrive on the scene with appropriate apparatus and certified personnel, how are we tracking that?
Most of the time, we try to look in the CAD and track that, we, we talked about that extensively the other night. Um, there are times, and I'll give you a good example, where you get a call for a patient that's just fallen out of bed, and one of the rescue members shows up, and their personal vehicle puts them back in bed, and they're taken care of. And that's not a problem, they get credit for that call. Same thing if they, um, you know, if there's an alarm at the Family Dollar store, and, and, uh, Alan pulls up in his personal vehicle, says, hey, it's a false alarm, cancel the assignment, they've handled that call. Problem we're having though, is agencies that send, maybe one person shows up on the call for EMS, they're not even certified, and it's at, um, a station, and another station, like Mike, uh, Mike Neal may have to go cover a call for some other agency. If he takes the transport and so forth, then he's not getting credit for the call, the volunteer agency that sent somebody there, and it's kind of getting abused. There's been some of that, so, uh, we talked about that the other night. This, this actually generated that, we, discussion generated out of some of the volunteer chiefs asking me to look into how we could change that, because, um, we had a lot of agencies just maybe running one person out in a vehicle uh, with, uh, no certification, and they were getting credit for covering the call, and they really weren't covering the call.
Well, after reviewing the, uh, video for the meeting last month. I tr- after looking at the, uh, video last month, and all the financial discussion we've had, this is one of the primary things that I'm concerned about, is professional accountability as far as answering these calls, and that's something I'd like for this board to take a look at in the future, is to see how we can actually track that as a matrix.
And also, I did tell them, um, we, we discussed this, I said, if you have a situation, um, and you've gone out on a call, cause I try to catch as much as I can when I go through the calls every morning in the CAD, but I also told them, said, look, if you'll either email me, or text me, and say, hey, look at this call, this is what really happened, you know, cause it may not look like they covered the call, and they really did. So we, we've told them, you know, you need to communicate with us some, as well, um, cause we, you know, we look for ways to give them credit for the call versus not giving them credit.
Mr. Mayhew, did that answer your question?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Do we have to approve this tonight, Chris?
I need you to, yeah, cause we're gonna need to start getting this out to the agencies, probably then the next month, and get them signed and so forth.
Okay. All right, uh, I guess we need a motion to accept the service agreement.
Make a motion that we accept the, uh, service agreement as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, Mr. Shields made the motion, Mr. Sellers seconded.
I didn't, I didn't make the motion.
You didn't make the motion? Who made the motion?
I did.
Oh, Chris, Mr. Casper, okay, excuse me.
Holly?
Yes.
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Shields?
A yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stalling?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Meeks, uh, billing, EMS billing ad hoc committee.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you Vice Chair. Uh, so every year, uh, it's just good business practice for us to review, uh, our EMS billing schedule, our fee schedule, so that everybody understands. Uh, has to be voted on and approved by the board. Uh, the commission last, reviewed it last year, um, and brought back recommendations. And those was accepted and approved by the board. And we discussed then that we would need to do this every year going forward, uh, just as a good business practice to make sure we was in line with, um, the appropriate billing rate. And so I would like to, uh, ask for the commission to make a ad hoc committee tonight, uh, to review our EMS fee schedule. This is again, how much we can charge, um, an individual to soft bill their insurance. Like a basic BLS cost, like four hundred and fifty dollars, once that, nail us cost seven fifty. And it's also our, uh, how much mileage that we can charge the, uh, insurance company for. Um, and in that as well, that ad hoc committee, when they need to review the ordinance, I talked to the director in length the other day. And we found out that we don't have any fire billing rates approved, um, in our ordinance. We have it in our ordinance so that if we want to soft bill, let's say for like a wreck on the fire side, if we're out there for several hours, have to execute somebody, uh, use, you know, hazmat equipment, things like that. If we want to try to recoup, uh, for instance, you know, fossil fuels, uh, trucks overturned on forty, uh, and we were out there fourteen hours and had a hundred men on scene from all over the county and hazmat team and everything else. If you want to bill that, uh, insurance company for the fire service as well. Uh, we currently don't have any thing in our ordinance that dictates what we can and cannot charge. And that's, we need to get that put in there. Uh, so I think we can just group this all into one committee. Uh, so if you got any volunteers that would like to be on that committee, I, I think we definitely need to have A P C, uh, which is our EMS coordinator for the county. Uh, and then whoever else would like to sit on, at least one person from the association and two commissioners.
Well, actually, we've got to have one from the, to meet the fire association, so if it's got to do with money and billing, I would suggest Chief Neal. And, uh, and I would suggest, uh, Casey from the public safety side. He said safety, okay. Casey, excuse me. And, uh, two commissioners. Mr. Casper?
I am, I will.
Mr. Harley? Okay. All right, it would be, uh, Chief Neal, uh, Casey from public safety, Commissioner Harley and Commissioner Casper for the EMS billing ad hoc committee.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for Casey. Appreciate you guys doing that, um, and if I could be any assistance, I was on that committee last year, I can forward you what I got and I'm sure the director can help you. Thank you, Vice Chair, I'll laugh.
Okay, uh, Mr. Meeks, appointment of a fire rescue memorial ad hoc committee.
All right, I told a few of them, I was up next to you. So, yes, uh, so we have discussed in length about wanting to do a memorial somewhere in the county. Uh, we have the sheriff, we're there behind the courthouse, which is beautiful. And I'd like to see something like that for the fire service. We've already identified a couple of locations, of possibilities, that's possible, uh, funding that is, um, from some different businessmen and eight, uh, different companies that could help out. Uh, I also was told, uh, Mr. Vic Ingram, Chairman of Board Supervisors, has a, uh, account set up that, um, he is putting money in and if anybody would like to put money towards that. Uh, Ms. Yates, I believe, sir, who's, uh, has the account information with the county. But, uh, anyway, what we'd like to do for tonight is ask the commission to form an ad hoc committee, um, to start meeting on the, uh, trying to get the plan together of what we want, where we want to do it, how we're going to fund it. And try to erect a memorial in the county, uh, for our fire victims, the ones that have died in the line of duty and whatnot. So, uh, you guys can discuss it and, uh, I'll be glad to sit in that hot committee. Um, and we would need, I think, at least two association members. And, uh, I would like to ask for Scott Hutchinson from county staff to be put on that as well. Uh, and then we need, we need at least another commissioner or two commissioners, I don't have to be on it, I'm just trying to bring it up to you guys.
Well, I would suggest that Mr. Ingram would, would do it, I would suggest Mr. Ingram since he's already set a fund up to do this. Is that okay with you, Mr. Ingram?
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, I will be glad to, uh, serve to help any way possible, but I will also be more than willing to step aside if there's any commission member that would like to serve. Uh, I just wanted to, uh.
Yeah.
Just to let you know that I'm, I'm totally in support of the, uh, of the fire rescue memorial and, and to those that don't know that we, we've lost it at the county. One would be Mr. Bradler from Tuscaloosa Fire Rescue and a gentleman who was actually en route to a standby call at Tuscaloosa High School with the dam life saving crew. So they're the only two that I know of, but if you look at the evolution of our law memorial, we thought we only lost a couple and come to find out, we lost more than we realized. So it would take a, I think, a concerted effort to, to look into those that maybe we've lost that we don't know about. But, uh, like I said, I'm, I'm just, uh, like you guys, uh, very grateful for the opportunity, but I will step aside if somebody else would like to serve.
Is any other commissioner would like to serve in place of Mr. Ingram?
I think Mr. Mayhew would be excellent on this.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be willing to, I think my son and wife have quite a bit of, uh, information on that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayhew. Did you hear that, Mr. Ingram?
I, I'm sorry, sir, I did not.
Uh, Mr. Mayhew said he would be more than happy to serve.
Okay, yeah, whatever you guys, um, you know, whatever you guys decide, I, I'll be happy to help, uh, that I'll be happy to stand aside, you just let me know.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I would also suggest that, uh, our fire rescue representative be Mr. Fowler, Chief Fowler.
I second that.
Okay, so you got, uh, Mr. Meeks, Mr. Mayhew, uh, Mr. Scott Hutchinson. And Mr. Ingram. Would you want to add anymore? Because that's, that's a pretty big project.
Did, did, uh, Mr. Meeks recommend two people from the, um, Fire and Rescue Association?
Yeah. And I was just sitting, looking out in the audience, I would actually, if it's okay, recommend Mr. Troy Tally. Is that okay with you, Mr. Chief Tally? Right, that would give you your two members from the Fire Rescue Association. Okay. Is that okay with you, Mr. Meeks? Chairman Meeks?
Yes, sir, it sounds great. Thank you, uh, gentlemen, for being willing to serve and I think this is a great thing that we can add, um, to our county and, uh, it's well deserved. Uh, you know, I think, like Mr. Ingram said, we can pull out and look at it and, uh, you know, look at the direction we're going with it, but either way, anytime we can honor people that fall and, um, you know, putting their lives on the line for others. I think it's a great project and I don't see where anybody should have anything negative to say about it, but, uh, I'll, sir, to you guys, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all the volunteer. Anything else on the new business, anybody's got? I think that's all I got on the agenda. Okay? Uh, the matters from the commissions. Mr. Meeks, you up first?
Oh, I.
I didn't get you while you're all, and, and all in, all in the mood.
Yeah, uh, so several things, uh, first off, I'd like to thank Director Slimp, uh, hate to have to miss this last meeting, he's going to be able to be there with us, but like I told him earlier, uh, he won't be far down the road and I still got his cell phone number, so. Uh, but I do appreciate everything Chris has done for us, uh, since twenty seventeen. Um, I think, you know, nobody can deny that our service is better. Um, I want to thank all the volunteers, I've tried to be at every commission meeting. Uh, you guys continue to rock it and do a great job with the call increases and, uh, we're working hard to try to make sure you're funded appropriately. I want to clarify, um, some statement from last month's meeting, because it was taken out of context. Um, when I was speaking of inclusion of the volunteers, I was talking directly about the bylaws, which we tabled tonight, um, but that's already been addressed under Article Two Purpose, two point one. Um, it has in there, um, that the public safety department, the volunteer department and the board supervisors, uh, you know, essentially working together. That's all I was stating, so it was taken out of context about some individuals and ran off on the post, whatever. But I'm not worried about that, I'm just trying to clarify what I was stating is that public safety plays a big part in, uh, fire and rescue services, our agents, to our, uh, citizens in this county. Uh, the board supervisors obviously play their part in making sure that we're funded and that we're providing the service. And the volunteers provide a huge service as well, um, hundred percent of the firesides they cover. And they cover eighty plus percent of the EMS calls in this county, week in and week out, and that's documented data. And so I just wanted to set that record straight, because that's what I was speaking of when I'm in inclusion, was just saying the purpose of the bylaws, needed to make sure we included the volunteers, the public safety and the board supervisors, that we're all working together. So, um, and the, uh, I think that's all I have, I appreciate you guys letting me call in and, uh, hope I'm better for next meeting. And, uh, thank you Vice Chair for leaving me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Meeks. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir, have you got me there?
What'd he say? Sir, any, anything you want to add from the matters of the commission?
So again, I'm just, uh, very thankful for the, uh, all the volunteers and for the commission members and, uh, I think collectively, uh, you guys are off to a great start and I'm just honored to be part of it. And, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, you've done a great job tonight, I did want to say that. And, uh, you know, I hope that, that through the, uh, evolution of the Fire Rescue Commission, that we do not find that we've lost anybody else. But, you know, setting that aside, other than the two that we know about, like Mr. Chairman said, we surely need to remember these guys. Uh, anybody that, that makes the ultimate sacrifice needs to be remembered, uh, from this, through, throughout eternity as far as I'm concerned. But it's also a, a, a nice way to bring, uh, all the members of Fire Rescue together as a brotherhood, uh, on that annual day that you remember those that you've lost, not only locally but nationwide. But, uh, again, just thank you guys there for saying it, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Mayhew?
I guess about the other thing is, you know, with this committee and, and reviewing items that we've already looked at, uh, I looked at some positive outcomes from within this department, uh, the commission. Um, on another note, uh, remand fire department has been very fortunate over the last couple of years. And we've been able to make, uh, some substantial improvements to our building. And we have, uh, managed to, uh, provide a area where we could have a twenty-four hour staff if possible. And I'd like to see that, uh, go out to the public safety. Our area is quite remote, I think the nearest to other agencies is twelve miles. And, uh, we, we've seen several events that I think, uh, outcomes would have been a little bit more positive here if we had somebody closer by.
Thank you. Mr. Harley?
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Mr. Sellers?
I'd like to thank Chris Slimp for all his service and I'm glad that if he changed jobs, he still stayed in Pennsylvania County. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Casper?
Nothing to add at this time?
Mr. Brown?
Nothing for this time.
Mr. Roland? Mr. Stalling?
Nothing to add, just great meeting, I'm kind of getting up to speed here and I hope to contribute a little more as we go along and, uh, some of these abbreviations I might need to be pulled to the side and tell me what some of this stuff means.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Shields?
Uh, just a question or two in reference to the bylaws, um, before we adjourn. One under six point one under meetings, um, who determines that? And do we meet every odd month or?
The commission was originally set up to really meet every other month, but there got to be so much business, we pretty much met up until COVID and then that kind of killed it off for a little bit. And, uh, we've met the majority, most, about every month. Uh, I had a discussion with Mr. Meeks about that and I, I think in the long run, it can go to every other month, but there's so much to get people caught up on. Um, I think right now, he, he's looking at trying to meet with y'all every month for just a little bit and then see where we need to go to from there.
Okay. And the only other thing that I, I would ask, uh, I think we got seventy-two hours on the packet, um, about the meeting. If we're meeting every month, then that's one thing, we go to every other month or, um, as much notice as we can get would be, uh, just greatly appreciated.
And let me explain just so you understand how the packets work. I, I don't finalize the packet until the board of supervisors meets, because there are times they will ask that we do something. So I've always kind of held off until they have their meeting to make sure I got all my ducks in a row and then we put it out. Um, I'll work with Chris on that. Uh, eventually it's going to be back to the electronic versions, I've had to back up and do the old fashioned way. So once we get it back to electronic, we can probably get it out just a little quicker as far as that goes. But that, just so y'all know, that is one of the things, we pretty much are kind of, I usually have to hold off until they meet just to make sure that we're not given any assignments or something they want us to do. That, that's a fair question.
And, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, uh, I'd like to say, uh, you did a good job tonight and, uh, Mr. Slimp, thank you so much for what you've done and Chief Key, uh, we welcome you and, uh, best of wishes to you. And to the men and women that serve, uh, this county, volunteer, uh, staff departments, uh, thank you so much.
Okay. Uh, like I said, I echo what a lot of these gentlemen's already said, the volunteers, we can't say thank you enough. Uh, I said, Mr. Slimp, thank you for everything you've done for us and like I said, just remember, we, I hope you keep your same phone number.
I'll have the same phone number.
Okay, so.
Don't give me.
We can still call you.
If not, I know Mike Neal's going to track me down, so it's okay.
Okay. Uh, but thank you for everything you've done for us and all the help you've given us. Uh, like I said, Mr. Key, Chief Key, we here for you if you need us, we're looking forward to working with you. Also, I'd like to thank your board, board of supervisors, I'd like to thank Mr. Dalton, Mr. Monday, thank y'all for, for coming out tonight. And, uh, like I said, thank all you volunteers for coming out and actually, a lot of them will see the same faces, but thank you. Okay, that's all I got. Accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay. Okay.